All right, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is March 25th. I am sitting in, we'd like to excuse Mayor Westbrook. So we will start with a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Davis and I will say the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to come together as residents of our beautiful city and we ask that that will help us to keep an open heart and open mind and be able to discuss things to better our our beautiful community. We're so grateful for the sheriff's office, for the firefighters and the military that protect us and ask that thou will please watch over them and their families as they serve us. Help us that we can have this a good evening tonight and discuss things to better our our residents and we love thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Amen. Okay, today we are going to start with our Davis County Suicide Prevention Plan and our Davis County Quarterly Report. So we'll turn the time over. Oh. Sorry. Let's do public comment first. Does anyone have public comment?
I will do the fourth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Film initiated incidents, we are up for 2025 again. Film initiated incidents are when an A W sees something on scene. Dispatch incidents were actually below the last three had average and like running service incidents that have been called in by by citizens to dispatch. Citations now, March is lower. Let's not be scared by that because March is is not finished right at the end. But we are over figure average.
Great.
Speeding again. Other than that, we are over the last figure average and for normal people. Prison crimes are below average. Property crimes, we're looking at about average, maybe slightly below. Society crimes, about average. It's hard to get an average for society crimes. They don't happen quite as frequently as so these numbers will just reflect for that last quarter. This is October 1st of 2024 through December 30th of 2024. So we have 310 total citations. It's quite enough to come from the last quarter. Of that, three of those were criminal arrests where the individual was booked into the day's jail.
I thought last time we were breaking this up into the last quarters so we could see the trending on these. Okay. So citations there is what we're looking at over there. Okay, I see where it's at. Thank you.
So we have three arrests that resulted in the individual being booked into jail, six arrests that resulted in a site and release, five fixing tickets, 133 moving violations, 30 non-moving violations, 90 written warnings, 43 parking violations, which it was a total of
Question on those parking violations? Was that something to do with the snow and parking on the streets or they something totally different?
I believe Lieutenant Boucher would be a little better asked that question.
Probably most of it is due to the
Thank you. Do you have the data breaking this out between people who live here and people who don't live here? Right?
Um, so no, I don't. Uh, but that that is something that we
So the data is available. You just haven't broken it down in that way before?
No.
No. Oh, okay. I just want to make sure you guys are in sync.
Yes, the data is still
Okay, I I don't know if that's something that would be useful all the time, but I think from my perspective, getting a snapshot of a Lisa quarters worth that says hey, X percent of everything that we're seeing is from non-residents and X percent are from residents. I think that would be helpful to understand kind of what's going on in our neighborhood a little bit.
There is a, um, so yes, it's absolutely something we do and that's absolutely something I'll work on. For for the next quarterly. Does that sound all right? Or is this something that we could just more follow up and email?
Um, I think next quarterly is fine.
I I would suggest, I interject a little bit. I would caution about presenting that in meetings like this or even looking at that type of data or reasons that I I know other courts or other cities have gotten in trouble for that stuff and focusing on those type of things, even when it's just an inquisitive nature. It's come up in the past with places that it it can come up as appearing as targeting non-residents. Okay, or a way to push that.
Um, without, uh, to to add to what Lieutenant Boucher is saying, that information is only as accurate as the information currently happening as far as where that is. So that information may not be far as accurate as we would hope.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know what we would do with it necessarily. It's more curiosity to your point.
Right, right.
So if if your recommendation is don't present it in this format, but if you're okay doing a one-time email or something, I think that would be fine as well.
Question, are you looking at just passing through like racing down South Weaver Drive? Or are you looking at how many are coming in because we have like a Maverick, a popular Maverick down there? Because we can do hotspots on some of these maybe.
Yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily that. I didn't have anything like intent. Um, it's just a thought that came up when we're looking at this and I would, I'm just curious to know if we are drawing in bad behavior or if we are creating, I don't know, creating the bad behavior or not, if that makes sense.
Yes, that does make sense. I and the citations wouldn't contribute much to that just because of Highway 89, I 84, South Weaver Drive. Or maybe thorough cars that push traffic through the city and stuff. So that wouldn't offer really a snapshot of if you're drawing traffic behavior related issues. Now, large criminal activity, that would be a place where you could look at it and see, like, my guess is you would find that I guess the way to explain it is transient crimes, so crimes that are like crimes of opportunity or something like that. You're going to see more of people from outside coming in and stuff that's more domestic crimes, like domestic violence stuff that would happen in the homes or in the neighborhood or something like that, more closely to home and be a resident or a citizen of South Weaver.
Gotcha, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
We appreciate your questions. Any more before we continue? We went through and broke these down by, or speeding specifically. So out of 310 citations, over, pardon me, 127 of those were speeding or first were for speeding. Eighty-seven of those were a citation and forty were a written warning. For the last quarter, we had 980 non-criminal incidents. Of of the incidents that we had, just over 5% were criminal in nature. Of those, 25 were property crimes, 22 were person crimes, five were society crimes and four were death were death investigations. Moving on to investigations. Prison crimes, about average. Property crimes, below average. Special Victims Unit, below average. Financial crimes, low average.
Good work.
Um, over that period of time, we had 37 new cases and 192.75 hours. So where that hours comes from is that is cases that were assigned during that period of time. So cases that were assigned during that period of time, we've worked on of course so much. Detectives log their hours as they do something. So if they go to a CJC interview or an interview for a child, they will mark, okay, I, you know, this interview took about two hours, right? By interviews, individuals took about two hours. And so they're they're marking hours as they do things. And so this is for the cases that being incurred during that quarter between October and December. Now, some of those hours might have actually occurred or been recorded during last week, but those hours were from cases that we got during that quarter. It evens out because we end up not double counting those hours the next quarter. Of the cases that we received, just less than half for person crimes, including Special Victims Unit, I suppose it would be over 50%. Financial crimes, three, 14%, property crimes, 14%. Death investigations, 2%, and then general investigations. Property crimes, 2%, general investigations, 9%. The most most frequent crimes that we investigated during the last quarter were child abuse, neglect, fraud, burglary, theft, sex offenses, and then civil problems and property sex offenses, and then civil problems and property damage. Any questions regarding investigations before we continue?
So, sorry, I spoke too soon. If you can go back to the this one right here. So it says 192.75 worked hours or hours worked. That then is on top of then your patrol hours, which are up in the 400. So it it's really closer to 600 hours that you guys are in here right now. Okay.
And that is not services, that's not my cell analysis. So my hour is not tracked in here. Half of my job is doing data things. And the other half of my job is investigative work. So I often help, uh, what I do for the bulk of my jobs, I help identify, track people down. I got cell phone pings. I make associate analytics charts and use the timelines and things like that. So my hours are not tracked in here either. Victim Services, we had 17 new victims that were served within the last quarter. Approximately 30 hours. Plus the ongoing six victims were end up being 23. That were served in the last. Making the total of 227 services provided. And we can see the most amount, the most prominent offenses that the victims were victims of were child sex abuse, stalking harassment, violation of protective order, and domestic endangerment.
So just, um, so just to understand this, are you saying that these crimes happened in the city or the person who it happened to lives in the city?
Yeah.
So something to keep in mind. So we had 17 new victims within those last quarter within South Weaver and then that we just said is ongoing. And so of so for example, some of these could potentially be the young. But the rest of these would be new victims. That's all I have for you. That's all I have for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's very, that's very informative. Thank you.
So I provided this this slide to Lisa and she, it's available to you guys. So so prevent, uh, so Davis County put together what's called a suicide postvention working group. The what started that started back in, I I believe, 2023. They got together a bunch of people from public safety, the community, and different services within the county, like Davis Behavior, about the schools, hospitals, and I'll say here in the office of medical exam and stuff like that. Over the years, there's always been, you know, there's been suicide prevention and there's been intervention, but there's not been much on suicide postvention. So the after response, so when a suicide has happened, how do we respond to that? So Davis County with this panel or this working group put together, how how are we going to best address these issues? Which ultimately ended up evolving into not a kind of two separate things, a suicide postvention and a grief response to the individual of death. Bear with me a little bit. I am going to read a little bit of this stuff. And everything that I'm going to present here is more pertinent on the top part of the slide, but if you guys later on want to read the bottom part of the the formal stuff, and then I also left some stuff over here that I'll mention here. So an organized response, so what is suicide postvention? An organized response aimed at supporting affected affected individuals who alleviate suffering and emotional distress and to prevent additional trauma and contagion. Postvention includes psychological first aid, crisis intervention, safe and climate engagement with media partners and other activities offered as organized response after a suicide death. Let's go on up this way. I never read this one. I covered a little bit on what it's going to say there, why suicide postvention. Benefits coordinated response facilitates healing of individuals and a community prevent additional suicides and negative outcomes, coordinate support resources among partners. I don't know if I had it on. Oh, no, it is on that other side. It's kind of interesting information and why suicide postvention is so important. You'll notice there, there's a little bit of statistics. It says see, large scale study found that people who who had known someone who died by suicide. Yeah. There you go. Died by suicide in the last year were two times more likely to have suicidal thoughts, three times more likely to have a plan for suicide, and 3.7 times more likely to have made a suicide attempt. So that, just that small part there, I think highlights why suicide postvention, the after response to people affected by suicide is so so important. There's the the history of it that was formed in 2023. The next slide or the next portion down are those two different things, and those are QR codes that will lead into links on the internet. This started off as trying to come up with how are we going to get this information out to these individuals that have been affected by by someone's suicide or the death of an individual. Started off as just being a little card that was made up over here to a little book of the suicide postvention and then adding a grief and loss resource website and then making it in both of them into a website. These little cards that we can hand out, the the city officials, you guys, the schools, public safety, anyone in the community as a community member I guess access to the information of when a suicide occurs. And like the office of the medical examiner, when they receive a body after a suicide or a death, they're partnered with us or working a way that they can lawfully give us the information so that we can go to the families those who are grieving and those affected by suicides and others that are getting them of the resource they need. By accessing that website through that QR code or through the website, will give the individual everything they need or what we have to provide for them and the source they can pull. The the emotional recovery of their loss. And then that's the survival connection cards distributed through multiple avenues such as on scene by investigators through senior homes, hospitals, schools, faith leaders, or group members, et cetera. The card lists, or the card lists a contact number to call for support and connection to resources. It also includes a QR code and a link to grief and loss. And then this is kind of more the bottom part of the thing. If you're interested in reading some of that stuff, but I won't bore you with it. It's not boring. It's very interesting stuff, but I don't want to take too much time on it. It's something free to read. So other than that, I just wanted to bring that up to you guys, let you know it's something that's offered now. I brought a stack of those cards. You'd be more than welcome to grab what you want, look at it, log onto one of those websites, peruse around it and help us out with this, help us make this successful. So if you come across someone who's experienced a loss through suicide or grieving or loss from a death, please give them this information and that card with them on their website.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's actually pretty impressive. I did use the QR code and it's 19 pages. Yeah, a lot of it. It's very impressive.
So they they try, sorry, they've tried to make it so that there's a lot of page through the group. I was I was invited onto the group to participate in this more from a public safety standpoint, in our perspective. But they tried to take into consideration a lot of the different personalities and ways that people grieve and respond to loss and to take all that into consideration as far as many resources available to probably a large group of people.
Wow. Thank you. This is impressive.
Thank you so much. Yes.
This was, I can pop it. Just gave me some general data and over the last nine months, we have
Thank you for that, David. Okay, gentlemen, we have one action item. It is our consent agenda for the February 25th, 25 minutes. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
There are no comments. I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Discussion item, Dave, you have an update on the public works facility complex for us?
And the physical abilities may evolve. We provided some project updates in the active, so I hope you had a chance to look at that. I don't have much more to say other than that. Ask their questions about the
It is looking good. I drove by today. Looks great. Um, August is still what they're aiming for for completion. Middle of August, end of August? Perfect. Fantastic.
General question, um, you talked about the time, on time, but under budget? That's where it's tracking? Okay, thank you.
And now that we can see there, as far as the 23% since we published that last week, there have been some additional harvest payments. And so that number was reported 1% now. As of this moment today, we'll reflect that in the staff. But I've also had a conversation with our finance staff about other ways to to report on the budget. Might be interesting to look at in some other ways. So we'll try to add some additional details and view that rather than
Is there any other numbers anybody wants to see?
Okay, awesome. Okay, moving on, reports. Does anyone have any new business? Excellent. Okay. Let's do reports, starting with Blair.
Well, you heard, you heard the municipal utilities other than the budgeting and the public works. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Um, just wanted to remind the Easter egg hunt is April 18th at 6:00 PM sharp. So putting a shout out for that, for the community to remember to come to that. April 18th, Friday night, 6:00 PM sharp. All right, Joel. Canyon Meadows Park. Thanks, Michelle. Central Park. Central Park.
Good job.
Yes. Okay, any other questions on that? No? Joel, do you have anything?
We are working on some new code. We just got out of the meeting prior to this one. What we're looking at right now is density bonuses and what it would take for a developer who wanted to come in and increase the density of their project, but to stay within a certain zone so that if if there's either a problem where zoning is rejected or the the zone is not compliant with other zones that are around it, what they can do to increase it. Uh, some of the things that we've looked at is things like what they need to do or should do if they want the higher density bonus with say the water retention plots of land that become very plain parks later on. And that can include anything from around the outside, trees, trails, pavilions, and making sure that there is enough land for those kind of things. Just just things that would, if we're going to have an increase of the number of people that are going to be living there, that the amenities are they're they're appropriate enough to be able to justify the higher density. Um, and hopefully these can also be used for where other people in the city may want to come in and use them as well. We've also talked about uh, things like trees, planting trees, lights. Uh, we've talked about whether they want to do larger amenities on some of these sites. And then today we also talked about the flex overlay that we're looking at for the commercial, commercial highway areas. And what it would take if we were to allow a flex overlay similar to some of the projects that we've had come our way. If it's a straight no, it's still a straight no. If it is, okay, we would do it if these different either amenities or requirements were met, that would make us all feel better about it. The intent is that we can then put these into code, give them to the planning commission as administrative checkoffs that they could do. Um, and then it would come up still to city council to be able to uh, go if it's going to go into like a development agreement or something, which most, all of these would. So that's what we're looking at. And if there's any feedback from the council on that, ideas, things you want us to look at, uh, I would love to hear it right now so that we can continue working that direction.
Sounds good. I look forward to seeing what you guys have come up with.
Good.
Councilman Davis.
Uh, nothing new from the Public Safety Committee. Though I did get my first email for South Weaver days. So just kind of a heads up that that's just on the horizon. So kind of surprised me this week. I was like, oh, oh, yeah. So, but nothing new necessarily there, but the first meeting is mid-April, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Windsor.
Nothing to report.
Excellent. Dave? Let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm meeting adjourned.